Good morning and welcome to the October 4th, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. This morning, I'd like to invite up a special guest, Ms. Yula, to the podium to be recognized by our commissioners.
Good morning, everybody. I can't think of a better place that I'd rather be this morning than right here with all of my friends. In case you're wondering, that's my boss. I'm not that bad. I don't have to have them to follow me around, but I am happy to be here.
Well, Yula, we're glad that you took the time to come up and visit with us this morning. We wanted to take an opportunity to publicly recognize one, your birthday, that just recently was celebrated. I know you had a big party.
It's still going.
Oh, it's still going?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think that's probably appropriate for you, that it just keeps right on keeping on.
Just keep on ticking.
But we also wanted to recognize, congratulate, and thank you for your years of dedicated service to the citizens of Sedgwick County, as you are our information person and a greeter at the, as the people come into our lobby, and you're the perfect person for that job.
Well, thank you.
How many years have you been doing that?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight years. So you're not a rookie anymore. Okay.
When I quit here, honey, I'm through.
Well, forty-eight years of service, ninetieth birthday, a great personality, and a great representative for Sedgwick County.
Well, thank you.
We just wanted to have a more public affirmation of your service, and congratulations to you, and thanks, thanks for what you've done.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thanks, Yula.
And a few more announcements. This weekend, this Saturday, is the Goddard Fall Festival. Sedgwick County will have a booth from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so come on out and say hi to us there. We will be closed on Monday, October the 9th, for Columbus Day, closed to the public. Emergency services will still be available by dialing 911. And finally, it's almost one month before the general election, and be sure to register, that you're registered to vote, because the last date of register is October 17th. Additional details can be found on the elections website at www.sedgwickcounty.org. So Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
All right. Kate, thank you very much for that introduction, and thank you for the reminder about the election coming up and how important that is to our community. Since commissioners are not on this ballot, we kind of let that not be in the forefront of our thinking, so a reminder is certainly appropriate. Well, at this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners October 4th, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor David Circle, First Salem Church. Please remain standing for the flag, salute.
If you'll join me in prayer. Dearest Heavenly Father, we'd just like to take this time to say thank you. Thank you for health and jobs and rainy weather to nourish our ground, Father God. We also want to take opportunity to remember the chaos in Las Vegas and lift the many hurting families in that area up in prayer. And today is the county commission addresses their agenda and looks at the many items that comes before this commission on a, today, that they will work diligently, with patience, with each other, and with the process, and that the work of the county will be accomplished according to your will. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for being with us this morning.
You're welcome, sir.
Next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Enrew.
Present. And next item.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, I don't have anyone who has signed up to speak this morning, so we will go on to the next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of September 6th, 2017.
Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes of September 6th. What's the will of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye.
And next item.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring Mental Illness Awareness Week.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation for your consideration. Whereas each year, hundreds of Sedgwick County residents face the reality of living with mental illness, every year during the first full week of October, participating organizations bring awareness of mental illness to our community. And whereas mental illnesses are more common than cancer, diabetes, or heart disease, and affects one out of every five people, touching every age, race, religion, and income, more than two-thirds of Sedgwick County residents who have mental illness live in our community and lead productive lives. And whereas mental illnesses are not the result of personal weakness or lack of character and are treatable, many people diagnosed with mental illness can experience relief by seeking treatment. And whereas NAMI, Newman University, Calm Care, the Robert Dole Veterans Administration Hospital, the Mental Health Association of South Central Kansas, Breakthrough Club, Via Christi Behavioral Health, and many other Sedgwick County community organizations continue to provide treatment, support, education, and advocacy to help improve the lives of individuals affected by mental illness. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David Enrew, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 1 through 7, 2017, as Mental Illness Awareness Week. Sedgwick County is dedicated to increasing public awareness in our community and asks that you reach out to someone who needs help. No one should have to confront mental illness alone. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye.
And receiving the proclamation this morning is Ms. Lynn Core.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This past Sunday, the Wichita affiliate of NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, kicked off National Mental Illness Awareness Week with a candlelight ceremony. It was held in Newman University and was sponsored by NAMI Wichita, Calm Care, the Mental Health Association of South Central Kansas, the Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Sciences at KU School of Medicine, Prairie View, and Via Christi Health Services. It was attended by approximately 200 people and featured Ted Swartz, owner and performer of a nationally-known theater company. He performed his play, "Laughter in Sacred Space," a personal story that was both tragic and funny, and focused on the difficult topics of mental illness and suicide. These are not just topics, but are a part of life for millions of Americans and hundreds in Sedgwick County. Fewer than one-third of adults and one-half of children with a diagnosable mental illness receive mental health services in a given year. However, the agencies I listed as sponsors of our candlelight ceremony and many other Sedgwick County community organizations strive to increase those numbers and reach as many people living with mental illness in our communities as they can. They provide valuable and effective services and treatment for mental illnesses and prove that treatment works. I am proof. Twenty-five years ago, I was told I would never be able to live outside of the nursing home I was in because of my mental illness. However, like many others, I am now living independently and productively in the community, largely due to the services I receive from these same organizations I mentioned. Treatment works, and I'm happy. There was a time when I thought that would be impossible. With the treatment, support, education, and advocacy provided by these organizations, the lives of many more individuals within our communities, living with mental illness and our families, can also be improved, and possibly they too can be happy. That can be a wonderful, impossible outcome. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here, and I guess, first of all, I want to say congratulations on your personal success.
Thank you.
And we're really happy about that, and you're living testimony that some of the things we've said this morning are true, and that treatment works, and people can live happy, productive lives. So, very, very pleased that you're here and happy for you.
Thank you.
I, my wife and I were intending to attend the event Sunday evening out at Newman and preempted at the last moment, but I'm pleased to hear that you said there were over 200?
About 200, yes. That's about the biggest audience we've ever had for one of these events.
And you had the dramatic presentation and then a candlelight service.
Uh-huh.
Well, I'm glad that there's a strong effort to call attention to this illness in our community and raise awareness to the fact that it's treatable, and it can be successful, and we need to be sensitive to it and be a part of the solution.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
Item C, proclamation declaring Fire Prevention Week.
Commissioners, I have another proclamation for your consideration. Whereas Sedgwick County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and whereas fires, specifically home fires, are a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, as they killed 3,362 people in the United States in 2015, according to the U.S. Fire Administration, and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in homes without working smoke alarms, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in home fires in half, and whereas Sedgwick County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Sedgwick County fire responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," is so important and reminds us why everyone needs to have an escape plan. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Enrew, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 8th to 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge Sedgwick County residents to have an escape plan for their home and know at least two ways out, and to support public safety activities and efforts of Sedgwick County's fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the board?
Move that we approve. Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye. And receiving the proclamation this morning is Division Chief Robert Timmons from Sedgwick County Fire District Number One.
Good morning, Commission. As you said, I'm Division Chief Robert Timmons with Sedgwick County Fire District One. A little history on Fire Prevention Week. It's on record as being the longest-running public health observance. President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed the first National Fire Prevention Week in 1925, on the 40th anniversary of the Great Chicago Fire. It is observed October 9th of each year in remembrance of that fire in 1871. A few additional things that the proclamation did not mention that we like to stress to the public. I know it's a battle with the little ones, but we stress highly that everyone sleep with their bedroom doors closed. That way, it gives you time and separation from the smoke, allowing the smoke detectors time to alert you and wake you up, and it does fall in line with the theme, know two ways out of every room. If your smoke detector's going off in the hallway, knowing two ways out stresses the fact that the children or any member of your home knows the window of the bedroom is an alternative way to get out of the home and avoid the fire. We also want to remind everyone that it clock change in the fall to change the batteries in your smoke detectors. We have on October 10th, the 5th Grade Fire Prevention Adventure at the Sedgwick County Zoo from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You're welcome to join us. We have approximately 2,500 to 3,000 area 5th graders from both around Sedgwick County and some of the outlying counties come in. We have multiple events from vehicle extrication to all kinds of fire safety. There's five or six fire departments that all work together in the local area to put this event on, as well as the great cooperation we get from the staff at the Sedgwick County Zoo. And also, our fire crews will be out in the elementary schools during Fire Prevention Week, doing public safety, and we'll, we have so many schools, it'll probably extend into multiple weeks throughout the month, but we'll be out doing fall events in the cities of the fire district. So please feel free to join us at any of those events, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you for being here this morning, and once again, raising our awareness of the need for a thoughtful solution for a fire event in our home, that we need to have two ways out. I'm not, maybe I haven't paid attention, but I don't remember hearing that your recommendation is to sleep with the bedroom door closed, because that provides protection.
Well, the previous, the older homes, the recommendation was to have a smoke detector out in the hallway only. The current code calls for residential, a fire detector, smoke detector in the hallway, as well as in every sleeping unit, but by having that door closed, as the fire is developing, that smoke is spreading throughout the structure, and the smoke is what gets the occupants of the structure. So if we can put a time delay in between when that smoke can get from wherever the fire area is to the sleeping areas in the home, we've bought that much more time for the fire crews to respond and effect rescue.
Okay, well, it makes sense. I just hadn't, hadn't thought of it, so. But anyway, appreciate you being here and calling our attention to that once again, and this is a good time to say how much we appreciate our members of Sedgwick County Fire District Number One and their willingness to provide this safety for our citizens of Sedgwick County. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item D, resolution appointing Craig Purbeck to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yost, County Counselor. Item D is a resolution appointing Mr. Craig Purbeck to the Advisory Council on Aging. This position had been held by former Representative George Dean, whose term expired in March. Commissioner O'Donnell is recommending that Mr. Purbeck be appointed to fill that vacancy, and that term would expire October 3rd of 2021, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Counselor. What's the will of the board?
Move that we appoint Mr. Purbeck to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Thank you. I will second that. And any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye. And I think this citizen's not here today, so he'll be sworn at the appropriate time. Next item, please.
Item E, accept the resignation of Bill Ellison from the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yost, County Counselor, again. Actually, Items E and F are both resignations. I think we can handle those at the same time. Item E is the resignation of Bill Ellison from the MAPC at-large position. He had indicated that he is resigning due to health issues. Mr. Ellison's term would have expired in August of 2019. There's no recommendation at this point yet as to who to replace Mr. Ellison. Item F is a resolution accepting the resignation of Darrell Crofts from the MABCD's Board of Code Standards and Appeals in the public-at-large position. His term was to expire in July of 2019, and no recommendation is yet made on his replacement. I would urge adoption of both these resolutions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Counselor. I think that replacements will be forthcoming soon, but at this time, we just need to deal with these resignations. What's the will of the board?
I move that we approve both resignations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye. And next item.
New business. Item G, memorandum of understanding with Rockford Township for road maintenance, construction, and reconstruction services.
Morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor, here to present on a proposed memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between the county and Rockford Township. The MOU draft that's in front of you is a modified version of the agreement that was discussed three weeks ago at your meeting on September 13th. Changes from the agreement draft to the current MOU draft are available in redline format in your backup materials. This MOU would essentially be a framework to reach future potential agreements for road services or road improvement services within Rockford Township. Because this would not be a contract, one of the major changes we also made in the, from the agreement to the MOU is getting some of the legal leaves, I guess you could say, in the contract. The, if approved, the process on this would be very similar to what was in the agreement, which would be the township would submit a request for quote, for road improvement, construction, maintenance services. The county would then receive that RFQ, and at the discretion of the county manager or his designee, the county could elect whether or not to submit a quote. If the county would submit a quote, a draft agreement pursuant to KSA 68572 would be included along with the quote. The township board would then be able to consider the matter, and if they would approve it, it would be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for any potential final approval or nonapproval, with the will of the commission. There was a discussion during the September 13th meeting about steps that the county, neighboring townships could take in terms of potentially assisting Rockford Township outside of any agreement or MOU. County public works staff, along with folks from Rockford Township and some neighboring townships, did have a collaborative meeting about the road matters there. David Spears would be able to provide any synopsis or details in that meeting if you, if you have any questions on that. The, Rockford Township has already approved the MOU that's in front of you today. The recommended action is to take the action that you deem appropriate. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I think that we had significant discussion about this at our last meeting, so don't know how much discussion we'll take today, but I, I know that the township trustee is present with us. Don't know if Mr. Williams wants to make a comment now, or let, let the discussion proceed.
Go ahead and let it proceed at this point.
All right. Thank you.
I'm in favor of anything we do to help the Rockford Township to get our roads back in place.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll go ahead. We do have a comment from Commissioner Howe.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, I guess, make that, make the point that trustee from Rockford Township, Dwight Williams, the elected official there that represents the township today, is here in our attendance and does support the MOU, and I want to say, I've attended a number of township meetings. The three members of the township were unanimous in approving this on September the 26th. And a couple of things that I think that are important, that I'm not sure it was, was, was clear yet, but this, this is, the term is, and I, point three in the, on page two, the MOU is for one year. There are some options to renew, but it is for one year, and 30 days is, there's a 30-day written notice option for termination by either party. The one thing that's different on this one, it says in, on point two B, that we have reasonable period of time to respond, so it's not a 20-day window. If it takes us longer to respond, that's us, a reasonable time, so that's reasonable, in my opinion. We also have the option of, in the middle of that paragraph, says, "The discretion of the county manager, or the county manager's designee, the county, could elect not to submit a quote." So again, we have the option of not providing a quote, because perhaps we don't have the equipment, or don't have the time, or, or maybe there's other reasons that might be, reasons why we would not submit a answer to the RFQ. So this is my opinion, much more lenient, I guess, to the county, gives us more options. It doesn't bind the township, it doesn't bind the county, it simply sets up a framework to go forward. I'd like to make the point that I have discussed this with Commissioner Dennis especially, and I know there's some other townships in the county that are having some issues with some of their roads, and let me just say that if another township was having some of the same challenges, I think, that Rockford Township's been having, and they brought a desire for a similar MOU, I'd be very willing to support that, and I think it'd be reasonable. If we have the ability to help a township, and they have, you know, extraordinary issues going on, that they would request that type of help, then I think it'd be reasonable for us to respond if we can, and so I think the MOU is very reasonable in that regard, and I would be glad to support another township that had the same desires and the same problems or challenges going on there. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would be very pleased to make a motion today that we would approve the MOU with Rockford Township and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, to preface this, I'll support the motion, so that way you don't have to take much notes and encounter anything I have to say, okay?
First of all, I do believe that it sets precedence. This is one of 24 townships that we have in Sedgwick County. I have 12 townships in my district alone. There are problems, as Commissioner Howe mentioned. This is a picture of one of the roads in my district, the ruts in this road are between two and four feet deep. This is the front page of the Times Sentinel newspaper from two weeks ago, from another township in my district that's having significant problems, so. So there are problems throughout the county. The problem is, how far do we go to help those townships? The people that purchased the property out there in the different townships knew that they were dirt roads when they purchased them, so it's not a surprise. The folks that have lived there a long time know that it was a dirt road, and they were enjoying low taxes as a result of not taking care of the roads for a long time. So where exactly do our responsibilities come in? We just added a couple positions to Public Works in our most recent budget for stream maintenance, but it shows that Public Works doesn't have additional people that's really available. So I think that this reduces the manpower to the rest of the residents in Sedgwick County. So with all that said, I told you at the outset that I'd vote in favor of this. It's not that, that I believe that it's something that's in our best interest, but for the time being, I'll take a look and see how this works out for the next year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment? I'd just say that I will, I will also support the motion. I would say that as we go forward, a clear understanding that this is in, pretty much entirely under the authority of the county manager. Commissioners are not required to sign this memorandum of understanding. It's at the manager's discretion whether we respond to a request from the township. And in light of that, I think that we could have achieved, got to the same place without resolutions or MOUs, but this doesn't require anything from us. It's discretionary, so I don't see where it puts a county in, at too much risk financially. So with that being said, Commissioners, any other comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Justin, thank you. Next item, please.
Item H, consideration of a grant in the amount of $614,028 for KDOC reinvestment monies to support opportunities to implement evidence-based programs and practices for juvenile offenders and families in Sedgwick County.
Good morning, Commissioners. Glenda Martins.
Glenda Martins, Division Director for Division of Corrections. I'm happy to be in front of you today. This morning, I'm here to present for your approval the State Fiscal Year '18 Reinvestment Grant. This is an application to the Kansas Department of Corrections. The purpose of this grant is to utilize dollars saved by the state in defunding of the funding of out-of-home placements and reinvesting those dollars back into the communities. The portion allotted by the state for Sedgwick County is to develop the new evidence-based programming and services that will keep youth in their homes and in their communities and reduce recidivism. For Sedgwick County, to receive this funding, the state required submission of a proposal and budget summary. In both the State Fiscal Year '17 and State Fiscal Year '18, the Juvenile Advisory Board, called Team Justice, reports and identified gaps associated with our current programming. The criteria for this grant is focused on all new programs and all new staffing. The programs that we are looking at are called Seeking Safety, Agenda-Based Program, Multi-Systemic Family Therapy, MST, and Trauma-Focused Cognitive Behavioral Therapy, are all evidence-based practices that will fill gaps in Sedgwick County. This grant includes 11 FTEs associated with the new positions, including three master-level mental health staff, one clinical supervisor, four senior corrections officers, and four part-time senior corrections officers, as well as an expediter position. There is no grant match requirement. The grant application is for $614,028 and is due on or before October 20th, 2017, with the initial period ending in June 30th, 2018, and an opportunity for two years additional years of funding based on meeting specific required outcomes. On August 4th, your Juvenile Advisory Board, Team Justice, reviewed the application and recommends your approval. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Well, thank you for that presentation, Glenda. I know that you visited each Commissioner to get us up to speed on this issue, so I don't know if we have questions yet. We have already embarked in a certain amount of this activity, have we not?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, I mean, we already have some programs that are providing these services.
Yes, we currently have a lot of programs in Sedgwick County that we offer our youth. The Board had, creates an annual report every year and identified some of the things that we're not doing. And we did that last year as an exercise for KDOC. And now they're saying, hey, with this money, you can now fill some of those gap areas, and that's what the Board identified that we do.
Okay, very good. And as kind of a part of this, not only working with youth, but also working with their families and trying to strengthen that family unit so that we can...
Do a better job.
...control these deviant behaviors, so.
Exactly. We've been working with Avira Institute on our family engagement. We've wrapped that up, we're still waiting on our final report, but in our juvenile programs, there is family engagement involved with families throughout each and every program.
Very good.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, I don't see anyone asking to speak, so Commissioners, what's the will of the Board?
Who to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Motion to take the recommended action. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
And next item, please.
Item I, Consideration of a Grant in the Amount of $250,000 for the Evening Reporting Program in the Regional Collaboration.
Good morning again. This morning, I am presenting on, asking your approval on State Fiscal Year '18 for a regional grant application to the Kansas Department of Corrections. The purpose of this grant is to utilize the dollars saved by the state in defunding out-of-home placements under a regional collaboration. This is eight counties, including Sedgwick County. The other counties are Butler, Elk, Greenwood, Calley, McPherson, Harvey, and Sumner, to provide evidence-based programming and services that will help keep youth in their homes, communities, and reduce recidivism. The surrounding judicial districts have an interest in a regional collaboration to provide services and programming that are evidence-based and done with fidelity. The surrounding counties have had difficulties providing sustainable groups and the number, the required number of youth for that group. Sedgwick County is proposing an evening reporting program as a place to receive coordinated services based on a need responsiveness model. The proposed evening program will utilize evidence-based programs, including aggression replacement training, the multi-systemic training, trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, moral recognition therapy, the seeking safety, the thinking for a change, as well as our family engagement and workforce development support, and providing substance abuse services in our facility. There are two FTE positions under this grant, a program manager and a corrections coordinator. There is no grant match on this. The other counties are in collaboration and have support letters for this grant. The grant application budget is $250,000 and is due on and before October 20th, 2017, with the initial period ending June 30th, 2018, and an opportunity for two additional years of funding based on the required outcomes by KDOC. On August 4th, your Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board reviewed the application and recommends your approval. I stand for questions.
All right, thank you, Glenda. I appreciate that. I'm, I think it's a positive thing for us to be in collaboration with surrounding counties as we try to address these issues. It's not unique to one county or another, and we need to work together, so that's a good part of it. I also noticed that one of the programs is Thinking for a Change.
Yes.
Seems like I've used that as I've reared my kids, and I think it was said to me, basically, "Why don't you think for a change?" So I have to check that program.
I think, I think one of the big things that we can do for some of these counties, what they reported to me when we met with them back in August was, they're not even able to provide any cognitive behavioral training for some of their clients, because most of them, they only have one or two of them, it's not enough to sustain or support a group. So bringing those kids into our community and connecting them with our program will help substantiate some of our groups as well, but it will offer services that will go back to those kids in those communities.
All right, very good. Well, that's, that's positive. So Commissioners, what's the will of the Board? I will move that we take the recommended action and approve the application for the grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting of September 28th, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting that we conducted on September 28th with the Board of Bids and Contracts, we have one item to present to you this morning. And this item is the Integrated Multimedia Solution for the Law Enforcement Training Center Facilities Project Services. The recommendation is to utilize the State of Kansas Contract Number 42598, and this is with S.K.C. Communications Products LLC, and this is for a total purchase of $102,326.29. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend this approval of this item.
All right, Joe, thank you. We were briefed on this item, but there may be questions. Commissioners, do you have any question or comment? Seeing none, what's the will of the Board?
Move to take the recommended action.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Next item?
Consent Agenda.
Commissioner Mike Spolsky, County Major, recommend you approve Consent Agenda items Kila with the Yankee with the exception of Papa, which will have to be part of...
All right, that's, you said K through O, was it?
K through Yankee with the exception of Papa, R.P.
Okay, that does include item O, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to be slow on the uptake here, but, okay.
Move to approve Kila through Yankee with the exception of Papa.
Second.
Okay, we have, we have the motion to do what we're supposed to do. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
And next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
We, do we have anything for them? All right, then we will go on to, I believe, next item is other?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, are there any other items that you would like to bring before the Board of this? I don't see anyone wishing to speak, so I think we need a motion for executive session.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. It's required to protect the privacy and interests of an identifiable individual, and that the Commissioners return to this room no sooner than 10:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
We are in recess to executive session.
Floodway was the only way to do it.
But convincing everyone it was a good idea was another story.
There was a tremendous amount of objection to the acquisition of right-of-way for that. "We don't have any flooding up here, and you're ruining my field, and you're cutting off the highway," and all of those things, that they did not recognize the importance of that diversion.
The design for the Wichita Valley Center Floodway was modeled after one Mitchell Saw in California.
They were very helpful. They sent us their manuals for construction of the lining, for the maintenance of the lining, how these things should be under-drained systems. So they gave us the design work for what you see on the paved canal now. The main project was the diversion of the Little Arkansas River, some water from the Chisholm Creek system, and some water from the Arkansas River through what became known as the Big Ditch. There were people said, "You can't do that. You can't put that little river water in the big river." Well, we did.
And that Big Ditch has been his legacy. Tony Giuliano is the Art Director for Sedgwick County. You've probably seen his work. But when he's not designing for the county, he's got his whistle on the soccer pitch.
He looked at me and he said, "You're skinny, you're young, you can run, you should ref soccer." And 15 years later, I'm still doing it.
Moving up the ranks.
And it's opened up a lot of doors for me. I ref at the local level, and the Juco, and the NAI levels, all the way up to Division One.
Achieving a collegiate-level national badge.
It's exhilarating. I really enjoy that challenge. I mean, at that level, you're reffing the best athletes.
Refing around 60 matches a year.
You'll find a common phrase in the referee community. It's "for the love of the game." Soccer, to a lot of us, is a big part of our lives, whether played it, watch it, or referee it, or all three. And it's giving back to the game.
Something that helps ease the stress of his day job.
It just allows me to accept and really take on any challenge, and a stressful environment at work, it kind of is easy, after running six to eight miles in a match and getting yelled at from everybody.
Crediting Sedgwick County for allowing him to pursue both of his passions.
It's a neat honor. I've gotten to travel to do some really high-level games, work with referees across the United States. It's just been a very rewarding second career, if you will.
If you've ever needed a snack while visiting the Sedgwick County Courthouse, you've probably seen Wes Brummer. He and his wife Debbie run the Snack Zone. Brummer also furnishes all the vending machines in the county. But when he's not keeping us fed, he spends his time writing historical fiction.
I grew up in a family that liked to tell stories. My folks grew up during the Depression.
That's part of what inspired his book, Dust and Roses.
It's basically about a young woman who takes a big fall, and the rest of the story is her redeeming herself.
Writing hasn't come without challenges. Brummer was born with severe low vision.
Describing color, that was probably one of my weaknesses in the story. I didn't put enough color description.
But that's never stopped him. He's sold about 150 copies of Dust and Roses, which can be found in the Snack Zone or on Amazon. And he's working on his second book.
My character is a German prisoner of war that finds himself in Camp Concordia.
He hopes to have it complete by summer of 2018. Habitat for Humanity provides opportunities for families to achieve affordable home ownership.
With the volunteers, we don't have the hands to reach out to recruit the families. We don't have the hands to go and meet with these families and help them along their journey.
One of those volunteers is Sedgwick County employee Greg Gann.
Next thing you know, I'm on three committees, and here it is 10-plus years later, and it's just a great fit for me.
Gann serves on the Home Buyers Committee, reviewing applicants and doing onsite home visits.
He is always enthusiastic and excited to introduce families, to tell their story, and to talk about not only the challenges that they face, but how they overcame those challenges.
You realize just how difficult it is for families to find clean, safe, affordable housing in good neighborhoods where they can raise their family without much care. These houses are filled with love. It doesn't matter if you don't know which end of a hammer to use. We'll find something that fits your ability, and you can participate.
Having volunteers like Greg, who are committed, who are willing to give up their time, their talent, their treasure, we can't ask for anything more. It's truly a blessing.
Wow. Every day is a great day. I come to the job sites, we go on home visits, we meet. I can't think of a bad day, not once. It's truly been life-changing for me.
If you're hurt, you want help to come fast. That's where these bikes come in.
We're able to fit into places that ambulants can't.
The Sedgwick County EMS Bike Team was started in 2009 with the help of grants and community donations. Crew members must try out to be part of the team.
I love coming down here to River Fest and helping out. I love biking. So just kind of combining two of my loves together.
Then they work in two-person crews. Additional support is provided with this. It's how patients are transported out of the crowd after the bike team provides treatment. It's also proven to be faster and more cost-effective.
Our response times are one-tenth of what they used to be down here, and we're using 75% less personnel to get the job done.
And provides a great opportunity for the public.
Just being able to interact with the community, I think, is pretty awesome. They could have come up and asked us a lot more questions. We're a little bit more accessible than we are in the ambulances usually, so we get to see a lot more of the people and hang out with the kids.
Lake Afton. More than 720 acres of fun, all within a 20-minute drive from Wichita. Join us as we take a look inside the park.
I think the biggest draw for this lake is its proximity to Wichita and the big city. It's close, it's convenient.
There's something for everyone. Boating, swimming, water skiing, fishing, camping, looking at the stars, and much more. Tom Ames has been coming out to the lake for 10 years. This flying field on the west side of the lake is open to the public for sport and hobby flying.
This is one of the very best places to fly in the whole state, actually. Lots of open space, real nice runway. It's just a great facility for us. We really appreciate being able to come out here.
Maybe you're looking for the catch of the day.
Bread-and-butter fish for Lake Afton is, of course, the catfish. The largest catfish that I'm aware of that's been caught out of here weighed 86 pounds back in the late 80s.
Or just a little peace and quiet.
Clear night. You can see and hear everything. You see all the lanterns, you can hear people talking. It's just an amazing sight to see.
And the excitement continues.
It's been a popular spot for people to attend and visit, as it continues today.
Celebrating 75 years of fun in the sun.
I think this lake is cemented in its timeframe. It's going to be here for many, many more years to come.
As we were going through the records, we discovered some very interesting things.
The role of the Register of Deeds office is to file and store all real estate documents.
Basically, it's ownership of land, and it's very important. And it started in the 1800s.
But that wasn't always the case. Like this depiction of God were these instructions to make a wig.
I think some people just wanted to file them here because it was an opportunity to have it filed officially somewhere. And maybe this, for them, was the most convenient place.
But it's the history that's the most interesting. These are the first plots of land for Wichita.
So this is what the city looked like when it was brand-new in 1870.
And the history that made Wichita the air capital of the world. Deeds to the Travel Air Company, started by Beech, Stearman, and Cessna.
These aircraft companies go back a long way. These all started in the 1920s.
There's even a local connection to former President Obama. His grandparents and other family members lived in Wichita in the 60s.
His grandparents moved from Wichita in the 1960s to go to Hawaii, where they helped his mother raise him.
And then there's the Wild West. This deed is from Billy the Kid's mother, who ran a company washing soldiers' clothes.
She also dabbled in real estate. So there's several deeds where she's granting property, and also where she bought her own property.
Billy the Kid also lived with his mother here in Wichita.
These documents are so important, and they're so unique, that we want to preserve them. This is just the tip of the iceberg. We have more. We have lots more.
Looking for news and information in Sedgwick County? There's an app for that. Download the Sedgwick County app. Inside, you'll have access to our Facebook and Twitter streams. Get notifications from the county. Search for jobs. Look at our website. Watch videos. Leave your ideas or opinions. Get weather and emergency updates. Report storm damage. Build an emergency kit. Download the Sedgwick County app for Android or Apple. You'll find it in the App Store or the Play Store.
Did you ever wonder how first responders in Sedgwick County find homes in the unincorporated areas of the county?
Hi, I'm Bill Hinkle with Sedgwick County Fire District One. Did you know that Sedgwick County Fire District One has a program called RAMP? RAMP stands for Rural Address Marking Program. This is a program that is offered free of charge to all citizens living in the unincorporated areas of Sedgwick County. Through this program, you can visit our website, www.sedgwickcounty.org. From there, go to the Fire District page and find the RAMP form, and enter your information. Choose from vertical, horizontal, or diagonal sign that we will produce for you, free of charge. This will be a green sign with a white reflective numbers, which helps first responders locate your property from a distance in the event of an emergency. Once the sign is produced, one of our fire crews will come to your location and install the reflective sign for you. This RAMP program helps first responders quickly locate your property in the event of an emergency, cutting down on possible delays and response times due to your address not being visible from the road. All responders in Sedgwick County benefit from this program. These signs can be seen both